Yeah, it's real.
Well.
President.
Chris.
President.
I'm present. Leslie is not at the moment. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
My motion to approve the agenda, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to discussions, Brian.
Yeah, perfect. So this little follow up is to add a tiny bit of context. In our contract review of spring of twenty twenty-three, actually, so about a full year plus ago, there's a lot of discussion on what parts of sort of student behavior, student management should be in a contract. And really what we agreed upon was to get a committee together of educators to really look at policies and practices. And so Caitlin, our middle school principal and our elementary school vice principal, took the lead on getting together and now I'm gonna remind you of what they did. They came in, I think last March, to give you all an update. They're gonna sort of give you the final results today and including some discussion if needed, but what will serve as the first reading of some necessary policy changes. So you can certainly ask any questions today that you have, but you're also kind of have a full month to take a question, send it to us. And then by the time we get to the second reading, you would have gotten the answers already, but we could have further discussion if needed. So really this starts that two reading process for some policy changes to make sure all of our policies, practices are aligned and not only aligned but modernized. So with that, I'll kick it over to Caitlin and Laura.
Hey, thank you. Uh, yeah, so we met all year once a month with a team that a food teacher, counselor, admin from each school and Darla as well. And also had opportunities for staff and group along the way. Um, we really kind of backwards planning to, you know, trying to lead to a goal of a student code of conduct that was, um, let's see, um, that supported us in having both consistency for, you know, admin teams at each school that have a common standard of practice, but also flexibility to meet the needs of our students and our families and work through what are, you know, an infinitely variable set of circumstances. Um, so with that, the code of conduct work, we took a look at like probably seven or eight different school districts in the area, just to also kind of root our, you know, have have something that felt consistent, you know, as people move between districts and like, you know, standard of practice across the educational community. Um, and we did a new framework, which we call the, there's a matrix. The matrix. And that is several pages into that first, the student code of conduct. It's the thickest one that you see. It's the AR, the student code of conduct AR, JFCIAR. And really, uh, this was a full rewrite. So we did not take the old one and edit it. We, it basically created it from scratch. And it starts out with kind of the factors we consider with a disciplinary response, goes through outlining the due process, rights of students, and then creates a leveling system for behavioral or disciplinary behaviors. And that, our hope is create some clarity for people of like, this type of offense can fall with this, within this scope of consequences and interventions. Um, so you'll see, starting at level one is, you know, lower level behaviors requiring just minimal interventions or classroom support to administrative office intervention. This is sub-suspension level though, so not including suspend. Does not include suspension as a possible consequence. And then level three is a short suspension and level four is a long suspension up to an expulsion. Um, so that just kind of gives us a framework to then assign different types of offenses, which is then the next part into each type of offense. And then it's categorized, some of them have two because it depends on the severity and the frequency if it's repeated or the first time. Um, we also have like, in bold, those are the required interventions and then, and that's in that level one, two, three, four part. So that we can have that consistency of, we always do this. And then here are some other things we could do if we think that they will be beneficial for the student, introducing their behavior. So this is quite a bit more detailed than the last code of conduct, the last one fit on, not even quite a page. Yeah. And then the, the rest of the AR is the descriptions of each disciplinary behavior. And also all the detail that you need legally around those things. So for example, there are some legal requirements around a number of these, such as weapons in schools. There's, there's ORSs that pertains to that, that require us to do certain things if a weapon is brought to school. Um, there are all the laws around, you know, harassment and bullying. Um, so we put all of that in here. So that some of the other policies that we had, we're now suggesting that we delete because they are redundant. Everything is now in here in this one place, which creates just a one-stop shop for families to understand our policy around discipline and our, and students' rights and responsibilities around this part. So it's not that we don't think this policy is important. It's just now embedded in here in this one place. So that kind of is an overview of the code of conduct work. Um, in addition to that, we did, uh, design a new way for our workflow as far as like behavior reporting from our staff members and our communication with them. Just, we're also monitoring that we have a digital form now that does automatic email communication. So our staff members will be more in the loop on what we're doing in the office. It's a sort of automates it. And that was in response to staff members wanting more communication. Yeah. So, um, I think maybe we might just take you quickly through, Laura, do you want to take them through the rest of the policy changes?
Yep. So as we went through and worked on updating the code of conduct as well as creating that behavior matrix, we kept going back and forth to make sure that like everything we put in the code of conduct aligned to the board policies. And then there were some where we are proposing some changes to make them consistent between code of conduct, how like different consequences or processes for discipline um, that are also outlined in other policies. So the first one is all about transportation. We did a lot of revising the transportation process as far as offenses and interventions and consequences and things like that. Um, so mostly the, all the blue on the second, third page are the new proposal that matches our behavior matrix and our, we've talked with bus transportation to kind of make sure we have covered everything that needs to be covered, but that it also matches what we're doing in the schools. Um, and then the red is the previous policy. So kind of a rewrite of the transportation.
One issue we were running into with transportation is the prior one didn't distinguish between minor and major behaviors. So students would get like three minors and then they'd be no longer able to ride the bus when that just didn't feel appropriate. As a, like it was a big consequence for one minor behavior. So we're now distinguishing between minor and major and have a more flexible interventions to support the student hopefully being able to continue to ride the bus safely. That's.
One? Yeah. Um, and then the second one is just the student code of conduct. So do we, we reference that one in this one? Is that correct?
This is the, yeah, so the JFC is the board policy, JFC is the AR, which just has a lot more details. So all we really did on the JFC one is match the names of the offenses. Um, we had actually a pretty short list here. It was not inclusive of quite a few things that just in nowadays happens, which is like technology violation. I think when this written, probably students didn't have cell phones as much as they do now. And so we just have some different, more specific offenses listed there.
To match our matrix.
And then, was there one or any word deleting? Well, let's see, the, um, yeah.
There's a few in there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the JFC F A R, um, on harassment, intimidation, bullying, cyberbullying, reading, violence, recording procedures. Um, this is now all embedded in the student code of conduct. So it's, we just didn't want to have it in two places. Um, JFC G A R is, was again a separate policy. This one was for tobacco. Um, but again, that's all in now the student code of conduct. We did somewhat change though, the, the sort of escalation of consequences to just align better with other districts as well as what we thought would be a more therapeutic approach to helping students cease using substances that are harmful to them. Um, it still does ultimately end up in big consequences, but there are, um, we developed like an intervention menu for drug and alcohol as well as tobacco to support students to ceasing before they're expelled. Um, there are, it's not very many chances, but it's the, there is an intervention step. Yeah. And let's see, the next one, that what, uh, chemical abuse slash awareness, JFCIAR. Um, that one is again to delete because it is now in the drug section of the code of conduct. Um, we did change the, we didn't just move it, we did change the policy again to include an intervention option before expulsion. So you can take time over the next month to look over each of those sections in the code of conduct and you'll see what we're suggesting as a disciplinary escalation process for those particular topics. And that's it. All the changes in this, okay.
So, I mean, just a question. I mean, a lot of times the infractions could be compounded in that maybe they're doing two things at one time. Is there a way to kind of, do you deal with them separately? Like if it's harassment on the bus, for instance, or something, or?
That's one fraction or two?
Yeah.
Yeah. If it was two separate offenses, we would address both problems. Um, but they might be summed up into the duration of a consequence. So if a student was harassing another student and got in a fight, that would influence the length of the suspension if it versus it was harassment alone or fighting alone. So that's kind of, um, why we have this section right here determining the disciplinary response. And it kind of outlines the different factors we take into account when we're doing that.
And that's also why the matrix you'll see, like some infractions will be two different levels because it could depend on the severity or the frequency.
Right. That was another thing we did do with this is we don't just say fighting is automatically this number of days of suspension. We taken, we created a level system or category system. So a category one fight would be like no, no injury at all. Um, and all the way up to, I think we had a three, category three where there was serious injury, right? Because it, you know, it matters. And then that therefore we have some standards. So I'm not just guessing, okay, I, it, it creates consistency. If there's a major fight, she's gonna suspend the same number as I would, or actually there's rules around elementary suspensions, but yeah, for, for high school and middle school. We would have a consistent number of days for what we consider, you know, if there was a major injury.
So, um, we're in first reading and we'll have probably second reading next. Okay. Um, was the intention of having this policy go into fact this year?
That is the hope. Yes. Yeah.
I believe, um, students now when they go and register, don't they sign a student code of conduct? Or sign the piece of paper stating they'll follow the student code of conduct?
Um, we share the code of conduct on our websites and the students that engage in extracurricular activities have a, an extra curriculum that's different.
I was gonna get to that, but, but, yeah, I guess we're talking about a major change.
Right.
Um, and for students now showing up to school, they're gonna be thinking, if they think, but we have this right student code of conduct, we're gonna be making a, a change on it. I'm just wondering how we best communicate that upfront to the, to students coming in, especially if they're signing something like, I think they've signed something like, oh, follow the student code of conduct or?
Yeah, we used to when we sent it home, we used to ask the parents and the students to sign it and send it back. And it was kind of like, sometimes we get it back, sometimes we don't, but that was the goal is so that you knew everybody read it and the parents read it too. Um, so that, that is kind of the history of how we have done it. Um, but I think, um, and I, if you go ahead and see this, I think that the goal was to really start the year and to be able to communicate this out with families, with students, like from the very get-go. Like this is a fresh new year and we have some different things in place that are going to make it much clearer. Because this, what this really does is make it much clearer. So I think that the group has talked, um, we talked a lot about too, is like really getting a jump on the communication this year from that through newsletters, parent nights. I don't know, probably won't have it up for registration, like since it's in tomorrow. Yeah.
We, just, yeah, just think about how that transition happens and how we best communicate that change.
Yeah, we'll, I, we'll certainly put it in our newsletters that go out to the community and we're happy to kind of work with you guys on how we wanna phrase that, whether we could say that it was our draft and it's going to board at this time. Or, you know, um, what the infractions are hasn't really changed significantly, like what wasn't okay before still isn't okay. Um, it's really more like the way that we talk about it and deal with it has changed. So.
That takes, sorry, that takes me to my second question. On the athletic side of things, is this policy gonna start to the multi-tier type effect and what it is on the athletic side? Or is that, are those two policies gonna be completely different?
Not completely different. So they'll, um, they are finishing that like right now, basically, but really the only substantive change is they tweaked a little bit the tobacco consequence tree or steps. Um, and they're utilizing the intervention menu that we created to, as, as like the way for kids to continue their sport.
Yeah.
Um, and if they, they have to opt into that to continue in their sport.
One of the things that was interesting is our athletic policies were not a lot different than other districts. So when we went to it, we were like, oh, we may be making some big changes. And then as we look, hold the other districts, we're not, we're pretty similar to the other districts around us. Where with the rest of this, it was like, it was all over the board. So it took a lot of time to compile where and look at what other schools are doing and, and try to align that. So, but athletics was really close.
It was. It definitely has a higher standard to be able to participate in extracurriculars versus your right to your education during the school day.
So from my perspective, reading this has two components. One is the steps you'll take. The other is the definition of what causes steps. I'm really more focused on the definition because I know you can come up with the steps you can take because you're experts in that. I hear it's just the other also. And also I think it's an opportunity, whether we like it or not, or, or when, who admits it or not. It, it also has an influence on the culture and the values and priorities that we reflect, reflecting that. And so as I look through this and obviously I can't read the whole thing and I'm probably totally out of context. And I've probably missing places that you've said these things are, and I'm just not seeing them. I just, I thought maybe this question would kind of give me some sense. Couple of things I noticed. One is in the, and I'm focused on harassment, hazing, inappropriate behavior, threat of violence, theft of, basically student behavior. And so let me ask you a question, using this loosely. If a student comes to a teacher or somebody and reports that they're being harassed verbally and it's making them uneasy and feel degraded and feel uneasy mentally, whatever defines as somebody's unhappy. And they say, who did it? And so you bring the other person in who did it. And this, this person says, if this happens, this person, I didn't do that. And this, this kid, and so you ask, tell us, give me example of what she said. It's a problem for you. But you said, yeah, I said that, but I didn't mean it that way. Somebody said that to me, I wouldn't be upset about it. I don't see why it bothered. Not a problem part, I can tell. Now what do you do?
So you look into the?
We do a lot of investigating.
Yeah, investigating. You look into it. So you would talk to witnesses? Is that really what they said or is it?
Where is the determination of what actually can be defined as offending someone?
Oh, I see. So how do we decide whether it was offensive or not?
I mean, you, you happen to use the word, uh, but in a sentence, in my family, the word but's not allowed. I heard the word but and I'm offended.
Okay, yeah. So I think we kind of go based on like what would be commonly accepted as offensive, like, you know, and, and there are some things that are in law offensive, right? So there's hate speech and that's in, in ORS that, you know, nooses and Nazi symbols and things like that are, are documented hate speech. So we, you know, there's some things that we can lean on the law to define as harassment or, right? If it's sexual in nature, there's, there's definitions of sexual harassment. So we, we look to, um, you know, there's lots of case, case law on that as well. And that's something that we're first in. Um, if it's something like body shaming or, you know, a lot of times this is more, we're gonna lean more on into the conflict resolution and planning to have healthier interactions moving forward.
You know, maybe telling the student, you may not have thought it was offensive. I'm telling you right now, it was clearly offensive to this kid. So in the future, now you know.
This is why I wanna ask, from what I've seen here, and this is the cultural part as far as I'm concerned. From what I've seen here, we haven't decided as a district what constitutes offense. And having dealt with this a lot myself with employees, one approach I've taken is to say in this, in this organization, offense is, is, is that felt by the recipient?
We talked a lot about that too, is the impact.
So basically it is defined as a person who feels disrespected. And I noticed just in when I left, read that the word disrespect isn't anywhere. I realized that's a subjective term. And I think that's the value of it because the differences that come up reside right there. This person may have had no intent of being disrespectful. This person felt disrespected. You can't necessarily tell this person that they were disrespectful because another person may not have viewed it as that. So what is the deciding factor? Now maybe there's other ways. The only way I can come up with it is if somebody felt disrespected, that was the basis for exploration. Because a lot of cases, at least I also think it's a learning opportunity is because not only is it defined the direction, because then you can say, okay, what is it about that this felt disrespectful, you know, da, 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 da? What would make you not feel disrespected? It all, not only does it, does it take the person who offended them and make them more aware of what they're saying or, or, or place the, any, any appropriate blame on them, but it also makes a person complaining take the responsibility for what they're complaining about. So I don't, I don't see any words in here that are kind of subjective in that way or our personal judgment in that way that we accept that judgment out of hand. In other words, it starts with somebody that feels disrespected. We're not gonna say you have rights to, you don't have rights. We're not saying they did or they didn't feel disrespected. That causes us to explore. So, and I don't, maybe there's another way with people more smarter about this than me. I don't see a mechanism in these definitions that clearly dictates without having immediately go to legal definitions of what and how you define those legal definitions and backs and force that end up being hearings and explorations and, and investigations uh, without having a tool like that that can be addressed, used in the moment to determine, okay, this is, this is, I have to take action, whether I like it or I have to take action. And my first step will be, you know, X, help me understand the, uh, the disrespect you feel, where that's coming from. And to me, it is, it, 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 it just in practical experience, again, not being an expert, it gives a practical tool for both the person trying to settle the dispute, uh, as well as a teaching tool and a way to, to kind of not judgmentally assess the circumstances. So I, I, I've got a lot of pushback in different public and, and company organizations for, for inserting words like respect or disrespect. But I've done it because it's worked.
So I, I wanna talk a little bit about this for just a second because I think that what you're saying is we talked a lot about that and you're right, that's the reason that we didn't include that word in here because it is, it's subjective. But the piece that we really wanna focus on is, so this, starting this year, we're implementing a new transformative social emotional learning standards that are required by state of Oregon. They've been redone. So throughout all of the standards, it is all about what impact you have on somebody else. And so I think it speaks to kind of what you were just saying, Will. It isn't about, so it, even if I didn't intend to offend you, if you felt intent, if you felt offended, right, that was the impact. And so that's the culture now that I've created is I've, I've offended you, right? And so I think that through all of this work that we've been doing, we've been keeping these, um, new standards that we're implementing and the work that we're doing with that in the front of everything we're doing because it is about the impact. It is about how every single child in our district, um, impacts the culture.
And every certain person.
Every person, you're right.
And it's gonna happen to you, it happens to all. We say things, we feel we're in good faith and inoffensively.
Right, exactly.
And that doesn't mean we were wrong. But it does mean that that, that they have a right to have that considered.
Yeah. I think we're, you know, we're really documenting our process. Is this just bulleted list on the first page of this AR? Determining the disciplinary process because the response, because all of these factors matter so much. The developmental age is, is on there, right? A kindergartner who is parroting a hate speech word they found, they heard, you know, in a movie that their parents were watching and they say it out loud at, at school, we're not gonna discipline them. They don't even know what the word means. Right. You know, and, and so we have to take into account all of these factors.
And it's appropriate.
And, and then that's, that's the correct and right thing to do. And we'll educate them first. And the consequences, we have to have kind of a higher bar of the evidence and confidence that that is, um, that, you know, there, there was, uh, maybe more of a choice that the student made that was harmful. Right? And so, you know, if a student unwillingly harmed someone, that's gonna absolutely be taken into account. Um, and sometimes you might still have a consequence because, you know, maybe by seventh grade, you should know that pancing someone's not okay. And we're not gonna normalize that.
You can have subjective as long as there is a course of action in a subjective circumstance.
Right.
And the thing, fear that I fear with these kinds of things is they become so procedural and so defined and so objectively and tangibly defined that sometimes the ability to, uh, some tools to keep it between the, the two people talking and resolve and, and learn through that process might be, might, we might miss the opportunity.
And that's why we have like the intervention menu that we have in that level system. So you take a look at that bulleted list. Um, restorative conferences between students and conflict or students who are having just a hard conflict with. Um, you know, parent, parents, uh, communication, peer mediation, like all of these things that we're using to teach and not outside of consequence, your typical consequences, right? And so we, we lean really into that, the learning. Um, and that's part of the intervention venue for early. And, and that wasn't in our system before. So this is.
So a couple of other things that I noticed, um, you refer relative to violence and hazing, et cetera, to most. There is one place you include a person's property. But everywhere else, it specifically refers to physical harm. So if a person is harassing somebody electronically and they're not saying they're gonna beat them up, they're saying, I'm going to take your book so you won't be able to study. We're gonna flunk that test.
That would be a threat. It, it's a, guess what would be? Coercion? I think that would fall under coercion.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the last thing I noticed is appears, again, that needs in here, it appears that this, this pretty specifically stops at the campus. And I'm just trying to figure out, understand why that might be that way. I'm trying to understand if this speaks to at all the issue of the fact that conversations that go on at school probably continue on the internet afterwards, out of school, off the premises. Do we take any role in uh, trying to influence that or, uh, and maybe it's in here and I just haven't read it. Um, what do we do about that?
There's, there's a, a legal framework around that. Um, so we have. Legal um framework around that. Um so we have, you know, clear restrictions over what happens on campus. Outside of, something happens outside of campus that impacts the student's school day or ability to access their education, then we do have the ability to do. Some interventions um uh that wouldn't be.
So if something that happened on campus.
Right.
At the.
Cyber rulings.
Intentional by somebody else.
Yeah.
That might might be affecting who they are at school.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's disrupting the the ability of that student to access their education, then we can.
Cool, thanks very much.
Hmm.
Oh, one last question. Um this was a big issue as Brian mentioned. About contentious, that's a big issue in in bargaining, and we made a strong commitment to really work through it, which you obviously have. I guess, I I think this is a silly question, because I'm sure you have, but. If this or some variation of this gets approved, will the people that were most concerned about this feel like they were heard and listened to when this speaks to this and gives them the tools that they want?
I think yes. Um we had a diverse representation even on our committee. You know, people who were sitting asking for that were on the committee.
It really helps when you have bargaining, if something does, maybe someone that wasn't. Included all of it or whatever, and they say, well, I don't see this in here. And this was one of the main reasons I made that issue in last party. If. Bunch of other people have said, no, we looked at this and we agreed. Yes, this speaks to what we were concerned about. It helps works through that.
All three schools presented the draft. With lots of time for them to review and make their point as well. So, yeah. Feel good about the staff I had here.
Good.
So we have first reading tonight, and then second reading will be.
Essentially consider this the first reading, it's a placeholder on the agenda, just keep in the record, but. If you have, as you're reading it, any other questions come up, you can filter them through me, and then I'll make sure that. Hayden, Laura and the team can get you the answers. But I'll hopefully have all the answers by next month. If you don't, you can do another round of discussion, then it's totally up to you all, but. That's where we process the first and second. Hopefully, in that second one, it's close to the final draft, if you're ready for it.
Thank you.
Can I give like huge kudos to Clara and Caitlin, because we met. As a team often, but they spent hours and hours and hours together going through this and creating the document that we have, so. I just wanted to give kudos for that.
You you beat a punch there. I just thank you so much. I know how many hours this was, and I know this was a huge deep dive and then. Reconstruction, and I appreciate that you're like, we're not gonna take what was here and recreate, like expand, because it was a disaster to begin with. It's much easier, right? It's like just start, build a new one, right? And I realize how much work went into this, and I think. I mean, I hear what you're saying about like the subjectivity piece, and I I actually like that language of like some of the impact, right, is the way that it is taken. And versus intent, right? And I think, again, these are great teachable um experiences for children. I know, I mean, I just. I hear you explaining all this, and I'm like, there are so many half educators where you guys have your investigative, you know, private eye. How to get like all this stuff, right? And and that's it, like, you know, they said, they said, well, who's, you know, how do you get to leave all of this? So I think this is a great tool that you guys have come up with, and I really appreciate the hard work put into it. Uh and I and I do agree, but there is some way to have. Uh you know, some kind of language that helps to um talk to that impact. And maybe it's. But the whole thing, but.
In my first reality is it takes what you can just do to. To do this. It's a grandeur focus.
Yeah.
And that's why it probably hasn't done well often.
Well done, too, thank you.
Don't just stop here, take a look at that, but it's. Yeah, we we can be different than other districts.
Yeah, we did. We did edit it a bit. Yeah. And and that draft is almost finished.
Thank you.
Well, you're so appreciated.
You're welcome.
So so.
Thank you for your good questions.
Registry tomorrow, rest rest up a little bit. Coming, I'll come back.
Yeah.
Oh, one thing on that that we brought up since we are gonna be voting on this next week, and and if wanna roll it out to to students right at the beginning of the year. Can we just have it as, this is our um. Plan that's under adoption right now, or like pending board approval? Can we just roll it out, then just have that as the caveat? It's still. A little bit under construction, but it's pending board approval?
It doesn't, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't sound like you're gonna ask for like a major read, right? But you're asking for revisions and kind of a living document continuing some things into some of those points, so. I'm very comfortable with that. It gives students a, just start with it from now, you know, kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. I think they're gonna be excited about it too, because I think that this will build that community of safety that they need to. I know my own daughter was like, what is this policy? Like, this is crazy. This is, this is our policy, so. Yeah.
Well, it's be great with exactly the same, well, this is why I said, have you looked at the policy on that?
The old one, the old one was pretty bad, thank you.
Yeah, we took, thanks, Chris, but yeah. All right, thanks you too.
Yeah.
We're gonna talk about the exciting world of finding a fact. Finding's a fact now. Um so John and, has everyone met? John and Emile, I don't think we have. Um maybe you can do a quick introduction for. Um so, oh, sorry, I was gonna introduce your company real quick, sorry. Um. Earlier in the summer, I guess, we went through the process, right, to choose an owner's representative, so that's kind of the level that we're at now, um. They, I I mean, they do a ton of things, helping us as the owner of this um. Campus and the decision makers for this campus, you know, ha- help us with everything from the nitty gritty to the big picture things. Such as hiring architects, such as hiring a general contractor, all those things. Uh that was awarded to Cornerstone Management Group, and John and Emile helped head that up. We we kind of have a team of four that meet with us so far pretty regularly. The two that aren't here are Mary and Casey, but they've just proven to be such great help to us already. Um. Right now, we're meeting with them once a week and are probably in. Maybe not daily contact, but starting to get pretty close to daily contact with at least one of them on either a tiny issue or even some bigger ones, so. Um they're gonna talk to you about a kind of a technicality of findings of fact for the. Way that we're gonna go through like the um bidding and procurement processes we move forward, and then talk to you a little bit about the architect who was selected by the team as well, so. And hope for you guys.
Okay, I'm John Abel of Cornerstone. This is Emil. Me, Nina, I'm gonna um. Cover the kind of findings of facts that um. We are bringing before you tonight, and so. For um. You know, it's kind of traditional that public bidding is the process, so this is sort of an exemption. Um requesting that CMGC uh process be allowed to select our contractor, so. The CMGC stands for Construction Manager General Contractor. Um. And. You know, when you look at projects where that applies well, uh Occupy High School. Remodel with complex phasing and schedule is like. Really a great CMGC project. It it's very hard to. You know, put together bid documents that have the phasing and um all the complexity of a job like the the high school project here. Um so. That's, you know, I think CMGC was sort of. Um envisioned from the start. We totally agree, and that's why we're um recommending it. Um the finding of fact um really lists all the, you know, the rationale of why. We think that's. The right way to go, and um. So that's really the key. Um some of the rationale, just to highlight. Um the multiple uh phases of the project, like I mentioned, um. You know, this is probably at least a two-phase project. Correct. It might end up being more, I, um for example, I worked on um. Sandball at high school, that was fifteen phases, but I don't think we're gonna go there. But there there will be multiple phases where. It's, you know, s- staff and students have to be relocated somewhere while we dem- demolish a section, build that. And then we move in, and then we do another phase, so that really makes for um complexity in. Uh the way you design it, um the way you bid it, um. Cause when you got to bid. All those subcontractors need to make sure they have those phases kind of figured out in their schedule, so. With the CMGC process, you uh bring them on board very early. Um while design is, cause traditional bidding, uh which we're requesting the exemption from, is. You design the whole project, and then you take those finished documents and you go out to bid. Uh we are going to bring the contractor on board. Have it early in the design, so that they are there sitting at the table while we're designing it. Uh they can give input and work with us, the the owner and um. The architect really to help them craft those drawings like it's gonna get the best bids for us. And um. We also have the option to release some bid packages early. If we wanna go bid out the. Yeah, phase bidding, we could bid out excavation early if we just wanna bid that, and then we can. Later bid another piece, so um. And then the. The safety is is a big thing. Um the phasing, as you can imagine, as we're working on those multiple phases, um. Just having the ability to have the contractor at our meeting and um bring up concerns like. What about our fire egress plan or, you know, um. Making sure the fire marshal is involved and um how are the kids gonna get in the building if we take away the front door? Just, you know, as you can imagine, many different um things where it's great to to work with them on that. Yep. Just because I'm not sure who all knows what, could you just real simplistically define the three? Uh choices we have. Oh, for bidding?
Yeah, with low.
Yeah, so um. Traditional hard bidding is what we call hard bidding, so that's design bid build. Um CMGC, um Construction Manager General Contractor, and then design build. And what's the contractual differences in those? Why, 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 financially, I'm talking about. Yeah. For for the district's uh ed- edification, what's what's the differences financially, contractually there? Um contractually, I would say with design build build. It's somewhat similar um to, you know, the CMGC as far as you'll hire an architect. Um we'll also have a contract, so we'll have a contract with the architect, then we'll have a contract with the contractor. They are different contracts when it's a hard bid versus a CMGC contract. Um. And the design build, third option, is completely different, because you have one contract. Where you're hiring the builder and the architect under one umbrella. Um we're not recommending that here just because. We lose a lot of control um. In in the design, you know, sometimes it makes sense, but um I think in this case, it's not a great fit. Um so. Those are really the three different. Methods.
On the financial part of your question, so as you go through the three, so from design bid build to CMGC to design build. You kind of start to move risk more from the contractor's side to the owner's side, and as you move risk along that chart. You actually kind of increase your financial liability, you could say. So at the end of the day, design bid build potentially would be the cheapest, but there aren't as many benefits to it. Whereas design build would probably end up being the most expensive, and the CMGC process kind of blends both worlds. So I'll give you an example. So with the hard bid project, the all hundred percent of the risk of the bid is on the contractor. So if he messes something up and accepts the bid and starts to work, that cost is just on him. But in the CMGC process, because we have a partner that we've been working with the whole time, we allow them to build contingency into their GMP. And some of that contingency can be to buy scope gap, which is if something got missed by a sub. We will then fairly pay them, because in the design, in the CMGC contract, it's actually cost plus fee. So meaning the actual construction costs of what they are, plus a fee that's pre-established with the general contractor. So.
That's what I was trying to get. I think the simplistic issue is um. That one is low spin, and the other two are are negotiated fee.
Um.
Scope is different from a GX, S, GMCGC, whatever, to to design build, but they are both uh negotiated contract prices.
No, so um again, it's sort of a blend. You could end up doing a fully negotiated design bill, but in the CMGC process. The only part that we actually negotiate are their general conditions. Everything else, they actually control and bid the hard bid process, and we control and dictate the terms of that hard bid, meaning. They are required to get at least three bids in every single division that they bid. They need to explain to us if they don't get three bids. One of the things you'll see a lot of the times, they'll self-perform work, and they won't try too hard to hit competition against their self-performing. John and I are actually, um Casey's technically the manager of this, but. Cornerstone, obviously, we do everything we can to make sure that's what we're here for, to kind of protect your interests, but. In that, the, one of the advantages, though, to that bidding process being under the CMGC as opposed to publicly. Is should they get a horrifically low bid that say the hard bid guy would have been stuck with? We can opt not to use that contract, or we know, like I just had a project where the landscaper just completely fell down. And now he's our low bid landscaper. We, as the owner, can say, oh. We don't wanna use that guy. We know that he could be problematic. Let's go to the second place bidder, because that would lead us to, it'd be advantageous. It'd be in our benefit to actually pay a little more for that, and that's another, a huge benefit of the CMGC process.
So basically, you're gonna incense the the general contractor to act in our best interests, and use an opportunity to have some control over that, but also rely on their interests. It's very open book.
Yeah.
The whole thing, like, we see the bid process, you know, with the hard bid, the the first method of design bid build. You just see a number, and they just bring whatever subs they want, you know, to the table. Here, we're gonna see every bid. They're gonna give us, we call them letters of authorization, that say. Here's all the bids we got, uh like Emile was saying, here's who we recommend. And there's a discussion there about each contractor, and we see all the the numbers, so it's a very open book.
And the other open book part is, they actually, upon request, will supply some monthly, quarterly cost reports that they actually show us literally. From their own accounting, exact is given, it's cost plus a fee, and at the end of the GMP, we actually settle it that way. Meaning, as we've gone along, the very end, when we establish the final GMP. It's literally what they paid for the construction plus the original fee that they asked for.
And GMP is guaranteed max price.
Yeah, oh, sorry, yes.
And another pretty big advantage uh that, you know, just thinking about, as we do a lot of these projects. If you have that contractor on board early during design, you may be at that fifty or seventy-five percent point. And figure out, oh, we should order the switchgear, because switchgear electrical equipment now takes a year or more to get.
For two years on generator?
Yeah, a generator, so there's a prop, we can develop like a long lead uh. Package, procurement package, CMGC contractor can go take bids for that, give us an early LOA that says. Here's our switchgear bids, we would like to order this, so it's actually there when we want it. Uh because if we wait, the design bid bill, you can run into procurement issues, so that's one of the rationales, it was just procurement.
Just for clarity, when we say con- whatever contractor is being used a lot, and. Um what we're talking about is general contractor, um that that's the, that's the people that we negotiate. All other work under the general contractor is bid out.
Subcontractors.
Subcontractors is what we're talking about.
Yep.
So we're negotiating with the top level, and then everything else is bid out.
Yep. Yep. Uh so I guess. If you have any other questions about findings of facts, but really it's a. Uh list of rationale in the process to sort of um you acting as the local review board. Have the authority to. You know, kind of grant that alternative purchasing process, and it's been um. Used a lot, um I think Banks has actually used it, I believe, for the middle school.
We did.
Um and Forest Grove, we're using it now, St. Helen's School District, so it's. It, I would say twenty years ago, it was kind of a new thing. Um and now it's for projects like this, kind of. Pretty much that all. I probably shouldn't have told you this sooner, maybe in the documentation, but the findings of facts um was reviewed by our by our legal counsel as well. And it only is a hearing, I guess if someone requests that, I assume no one did, so.
No, and I think that just speaks to the um. A a while ago, and I'm not sure when this law changed. You would have had to have held a hearing, similar to your budget hearing. They just open up, and if anyone wants to challenge us, they can. It it now this is becoming so common. The hearing is only its own, whatever request is, so you don't have a hearing scheduled, it's just no one requested. Sure, any questions? And just to highlight for transparency sake, um this is in your consent agenda, so there won't be a separate. Item on it tonight, but don't just be bundled into your consent agenda. All right, let's hear about Brick. Okay, um. So we also, in the last month, conducted RFP or Request for Proposals for Architects. We had quite amazing interest, I think, like. Pointy some odd firms with engineers and all came to our walkthrough, and from that, we got twelve architect proposals, again, really good. Um showed a lot of interest in your district people wanting to work here. Uh from those twelve, uh we selected for interview um three firms, Maila, Opsis and Brick. And as part of that interview committee, I feel like all three did an outstanding job in their interviews. But clearly, one kind of rose to the top, and that was Brick Architecture. Um as they stated in their interview, which is something I didn't actually know, they only do K twelve work, that's it. That's their whole focus. That's all they do, and they showed quite a passion for it. Um I would say, for my opinion, they were much more engaging. Um and just had more, we had given them a set of questions to answer to be prepared for. And they were just more informative in those answers to us that really kind of helped lead the way. Um and they had a one particular. Um and they had a one particular team member who was very excited about the master planning. Had already spent a lot of time master planning ahead of time, which was great.
Yeah.
And um they are very eager, so we sent them the notice of intent. They said sure thing, uh that was just for our protest period, that was last week, we got no protests. Uh we did get some requests from our um the people who didn't get selected for a debrief. Uh Molly and I are working on getting those scheduled. And we have a kickoff meeting with Brick actually tomorrow to start working on the schedule for the master plan. Uh the overall schedule for sort of the architectural design work. Uh I'm sorry, that should have been, that could have been a handout I brought, it would have been the program schedule, we'll make sure you guys get a copy of it, but. We're currently planning about a four-month master plan process between now and December. With the goal that I had of bringing you guys that master plan on, say, your board meeting in January. Uh with obviously many reviews that you guys will see in drafts prior to that, say, final publication. Um and you most likely will meet with Brick from time to time between now and then as they present interim. Master plans so that everyone can get a uh chance of what's happening. Um in the meantime, we planned also as the master plan starts to develop. Try to start to figure out what our aux gym design looks like and start to work on some high school design work, just because I think there's. Even though the master plan will be in the background, we have a pretty good idea of what we need to start looking at so we can meet our. Overall schedule goals of, well, for me, completing the new gym next year. And starting construction on the high school next year, so um. So that's our, where we're at with our heart pick.
What if we would rather have the auxiliary gym attached to the new high school?
That's.
Just hypothetically speaking.
But that's, that's part of the master plan.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I think, so early, there are certain goals that I think we need to establish in the early weeks of the master plan. And um I think the gym will be one of those early topics.
And we're gonna talk about that during this work session, some of those same time.
Just later on.
Okay, sorry.
Uh you're doing nice.
Alright, good.
Great question.
Perfect time. Any, so the thing like with Brick right now, what you'll be approving tonight is that like there are top choice there who we're going forward with. You'll see a contract with them at a later meeting, probably by September, right? We'll see the added contract.
At your next board meeting, we'll have a contract, so we're gonna do like a master agreement with them that will then have what we refer to as task work orders. That will establish the fee for that section of their work. The first task work order that we've asked them to propose, or we've asked them to prepare, is for the master plan. Um and then we'll most likely get, right now, we've considered, what we've said, we've considered them for at least in the um what's in your packet. Is the master planning and major projects, and so right now, the high school is obviously a major project awarded to Brick. Um there's still a question about the gym, we might, we could peel that off and give that to a different architect if we saw a benefit in that. Um and I think again, that'll be revealed in the master planning, although I'm certain Brick's master plan involves designing the gym, so.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So just any questions about either Brick, if you like, or and if we don't know, we can get for you, or any questions just about where we're at in the process on that?
I just want to clarify, so you were saying um uh we'll have the plan, master plan hopefully in January for our board meeting. And then you said um then building, like starting construction in twenty twenty-five, do you mean like the following year or I mean? Like, I I think it's two years versus like actual year, so that's what I'm.
I I look at it as a yearly as opposed to your years, but um although we do look at things a lot of the time from your physical years and school years.
See, there's a lot of different.
Yeah, no, we have K twelve work, so, okay. So my goal right now is if we can get a design, an agreement upon location and all those things for the gym. That we could potentially start construction in March.
Okay.
Uh.
Twenty twenty-five.
Of twenty twenty-five. And the goal was that we would complete that by the end of the summer of twenty twenty-five. So in that summer, we begin what we need to demolish for the high school addition. Assuming that the barn obviously is part of that location where things will go. Then we could get rid of the barn without necessarily disrupting activities because the new gym would already be up and functioning. And again, my goal in a district as well, that way by the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, that's September. That oxygen is up and running.
Nice, okay.
So that's sort of, that's sort of the goal there, and then the rest of the construction for the high school sort of begins at that point, you could say. So when I say construction will begin in twenty-five, I'm thinking probably summer into fall, depending on how the design goes. And that's where we're talking about phasing all of the planning and documents. So we're gonna meet with the city here fairly soon now that we have our architect. And we want to establish what it looks like for them, because what I'd like to do, what we would like to do, sorry, he's a first person a lot, but we, we're a team. Um is when we go to the city, we probably want to get a grading, demolition and grading package, followed by a structural package. Followed by say like a finished building package with all of our other plans and then Brick can supplies those documents in that order. So that they can still actually be working on, say, the finished designs of the rooms. Meanwhile, we already know the foundation and structure, so they can start the excavation and digging while it's still dry. If we run a little too late in, say, like December, January twenty-five, it's not that we can't do it. We would be on a good timeline for opening in twenty-seven, but it wouldn't be a great time to start the dirt work, so I'd really like to get the dirt work going. So we uh in late twenty twenty-five. I don't know if that's the location of talking to.
Thank you.
I'm just moving forward.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
All of that goes to the CMG process where you can start phasing uh what has to happen first, you have to put a foundation, right? Or to put a foundation in, you have to do exclamation. So all, you can start taking the design package, overall building, start slicing it up into what has has to happen first. Start releasing those packages earlier, get permitting started earlier, all of it, it all just kind of works like in a relay. Early, like the first stage, first leg, right? That's it.
Thank you.
So what we're gonna talk about now, maybe you two can share that one.
Yep.
Um but thanks, John and Emile, and of course, you're welcome to stay through this, but I'm gonna facilitate or. Since the board is gonna facilitate, but um. So this was, this has been sort of an interesting process and I've actually, this is a summary of what I've talked to all of you about, about board goals. So let me give you sort of the dichotomy that um we were in is trying to. Kind of hand something off to, say, the architect that gives them some direction. Versus not letting the professionals that they are do their job. Because they're the experts, they should come up with the designs and how much do we? How much by our influence does that limit them, right? So that's just been a sort of a back and a forth. And so what, kind of what we started with was, let's just tell them to build us the greatest school in the history of the planet and, you know, we'll see what they come up with. And then it was, well, let's give them really some minutia, like we've talked about, like quite literally, the example Dan gave earlier, quite literally. Is the gym attached to the wall of the other school or not, or is it even attached to which school or, you know, which is quote-unquote better? So it didn't feel appropriate to not have that discussion because, team, to be frank. We were having that discussion, it just, we weren't having it as a board, it was like one of you would call me, one of you, and and so it would just be this sort of. Trying to wrangle it all together, so it it did seem to. It did seem to be appropriate, and I've talked to many of you about this, to try to put something together to get started with. That we can hand to the architect that has your ideas on paper. That's the, that's everything except the first page. Because I think there's another piece of this that is vital for for us to talk about, and that's what I've referred to as like pressure points. It's things where there's not a guaranteed right answer, it's not painfully obvious, it's not like. And I'm not even giving an example of something that's clearly obvious, but there's a couple of things already that there's clearly a choice that's gonna have to be made. I think going through an activity like this and continuing to have these discussions will identify what those quote-unquote pressure points are. Uh so on this first kind of background piece, all I go into, and I'm just gonna summarize the first page, then I'm gonna ask you to take a few minutes to read the rest. And then we're gonna have a discussion about at least one part of it. So the the background is. Our architect already knows and they are well skilled in doing this, and I've seen it, the process firsthand. They will engage you, they will engage staff members, they will engage students, they will engage the community. On a uh this master planning process, this design process, they will, you know, you've all seen the meetings where they bring up things. And they have all the priorities and you get to put one green dot, one spot, and then a blue dot over here. They will be doing that, but you all sit in such a unique spot. That not only do you get to be collaborators and contributors to the process. Ultimately, you're going to adopt the master plan, you're also the final decision maker in these long-range, these big, big picture things. So that just creates a unique opportunity for you where you're not just giving input, you have to eventually have a process for a decision. So this is a a a draft of the process that seems to be. Most aligned with what the architect, the general contractor, cornerstone, myself are are already kind of engaged in. So as we go through the planning process, these pressure points will arise, some will be paint obvious in about three minutes if they're not obvious already. And then some will be obvious through the planning process, something will come up and it'll be clearly on different sides of it. So the idea would be that those pressure points are brought to the BMT. And what that is, is the the bond management team, it meets weekly, it has staff and two board members, reps from cornerstone. And we'll learn tomorrow how we're gonna fold the architect into that, and then in a few weeks, we'll learn how to fold the the contractor into that. That will be a discussion and hopefully we'll be able to bring a recommendation to you. That could serve as a first reading, where the rest of you who aren't on the BMT or anyone would be allowed to, of course, would ask for more information. Some of the pieces of that recommendation should include would be like. If it's a decision point, right, a pro and a con, what's the impact of the budget? What's the impact on the timeline of the project? What's the impact on the scope? And I mean, all these things, of course, are gonna have trade-offs, you know, if it costs more money, you're probably gonna do less, even though I have those set up separately. What's the impact on the program? Meaning is one thing easier to maintain the function of the district? Does one make school easier than than another, even if it costs a little bit more money? And what's the impact on the community? So then, again, you would hear for major decisions like these, ideas like a first and a second reading. Ideas like, like what Caitlin and Laura did today. Where you could read it, you could ask questions, you'd have some time to mull over it, then we bring it back for like a formal vote. And of course, our goal is always going to be that you all end up agreeing. But what our expectation has to be is like consensus, right? Even if it ends up being a three to two vote or a four to one vote. Once that's happened, then we're all on board and we're all supporting it moving forward, I think that that has to be our our ultimate um way that we work with each other. And then the only other piece is um. The the last one I put is, I I'm, can't take away any of your rights or anything, right? What you, what what you can always do is you can bring up a motion, you can say, I think we're ready to make a decision on this. And you can always make a motion. If someone were to make a motion, someone else on the board has to second it, right? That's the procedure, and then the chair could call for a vote. I think um that's an option that's always on play, always gonna be in place for you and um. And that's, that's, that's the process, so the process I would like to see is us discussing as much as possible, getting you as much information as can. And really embrace the idea that there's going to be these pressure points. And I think the two obvious ones, I mean, haven't mentioned the one yet, but the most obvious one we talked about today, like location of the auxiliary gym. There's um diverging thinking on where that should be. I I don't think diverging thinking should be something we shy away from, I think we should embrace it and and say how to learn best and make the best outcome. And then the other one, of course, is where we're sitting, right? It's it's clear that there's two different schools of thought on this building and. As we're gaining the information, when is gonna be the appropriate time to make that decision? Because that that decision will have to come. So and I'm, well, I hope it's okay, I'm not, I I'm certainly not trying to put you on the spot, I know that's something Will's very interested in even talking about today. But what I'd like to do first is I'd like to just give you some time, and I don't, I don't think it's gonna take a lot of time. But let's say about five minutes and I'll check in with you, you need to scan the remaining pages of this. It's simply either directly copied and pasted from what you all sent me. Or sometimes I did some paraphrasing, right, just for sort of editing procedures. And you can just read it, but sometimes it helps me to kind of read with a purpose. So sometimes what I try to do is maybe circle things that I'm like in dead agreement with, I'm like, yep, right on board with that. But maybe underline some things that you might see as pressure points, or you might see as pieces that you see differently. And if that protocol doesn't work for you, that's totally fine, but I think it's good to just maybe read through this first. And let's, let's see where that conversation takes us, does that sound okay?
Sure.
Okay, I'll just watch the time for about five minutes, but um if you need a pen, I I brought some in the middle.
I would like one.
Thanks.
Thank you for being a gracious host.
Yes, you're a good host.
We also have multi-clavored goldfish stands. Don't stay too far, Harry, no.
Which flavor, the like weird cookies and cream?
Oh, they're all in there. Oh, you're asking, John. I thought you were asking which was the baby.
One of the things in Europe that I noticed, all the water bottles, the cap doesn't come off.
Oh, no.
It's designed to knock and then flip open, so you don't lose the cap and cause uh, you know.
They're all have to, oh, this is putting someone in the lobby.
Hey, that was very. What do you say the twenty-first?
The twenty-first.
In the afternoon, yeah.
It's a three, seven or something.
He's got already done, maybe they will get afternoon, I don't know. I'm gonna do a subtle early in the day, I'm free by noon, everybody.
Well, we do, we do my zoom. We'll do on zoom.
Paul is the main guy that I'm talking to.
Want to review the storming?
Yeah. Yeah. All, all of them or just the two that we're gonna?
Yeah, it was weird, Ron.
Three that did not interview.
Yeah, none of the, the two that interviewed, but didn't get selected, they didn't request, Ron. There's just three arms. That didn't get interviewed, Ron. But they already get the score sheets. I guess they just want some more detail. Yeah, and I mean, I, I took notes on most of them. So I, I did the feedback on the owner draft ones and it was fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know so. You know, and like yell at me in my office. So it's always tough just giving like a really, that was five minutes.
Okay.
I know that's a, I know that's a really. I know it's a really short amount of time to look at this. But I think this is helpful in knowing that something like this, this summary is going to go to the architect. So I think. I think setting aside for a few more minutes to leave space for something else, setting aside the district office decision and setting aside the gym decision. Are there, are there pieces, are there ideas, are there phrases? Is there something about this as a starting point that you would like to see different? Remembering that this is not like something the architect's going to use as like. A, oh my gosh, one hundred percent. I'm going to check off that we did everything. It's more to let them know what our overarching ideas are. But your overarching ideas are.
So on the twenty year master plan, um, well, and we, we talked about a twenty five hundred. Occupant load for the campus. I think a better term for that would be to try to maximize the campus. And what that would look like instead of trying to hit a target.
So where does, where does the twenty five hundred? I mean, currently we have a thousand.
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred.
Yeah.
So this is more than doubling.
Yeah.
Slightly more than doubling what we have.
Both, both the city and us have done population projections. Based on the growth, the potential growth in the next ten years. And uh those, those numbers happen to loosely match. Based on, it's based on things like there are not, there's for nine hundred homes here. Hundred forty homes here. How many families at, many kids is that? What age are they? How do they progress through? And over what period of time that happens, sure. And so the twenty five hundred uh, uh. Is essentially. When this, that is built out. Um, it comes from two directions. Well, that is, when these people are built out, that's about the population. That we're going to have to serve. Now that doesn't matter. Relative to facilities. Other than, does that mean we can accommodate them here?
Right.
Or we have to consider a different location, expanded cooperative alliance, et cetera.
Yeah.
So back in two thousand and five, the first time we looked at this. We looked at. As opposed to try to look at population forecast, which are never reliable at that point. What can we, what can we accommodate? And at that point, we get a some master plan board. And this is very general. It was determined that. The campus could support. A high school that would potentially hold eight hundred students. Which would dictate a certain capacity in middle school and a certain capacity in elementary school. And the campus at its current footprint size. Would be able to accommodate that and, and all the appropriate needs, parking and rent, all that kind of stuff. We've revisited that decision about three times since then, including last year. So now we have accurate population information and it just ironically ten. Fits together. And so there's, these numbers are strictly population. The campus capacity is a different calculation. Not influenced by that.
Yeah.
But it happened, they happen to indicate that, that we can. Build everything we need here with that. So that makes it essentially a. You know, a minimum twenty year plan.
And so to me, I, I like that approach you two are talking about of like, what is the? Most number of students that could fit on this and it'd be a good high school and all that thing.
Yeah.
Almost rather than saying, we know exactly how many kids are going to be here in twenty forty.
Right.
It just seems so like. By the same number of families, are you going to move? Like I always use you for the example, right? Your house used to give us what? Five students?
Yeah.
And now you give us none.
Yeah, you've really dropped off.
So are you, are you moving? Are you moving to that young?
Promoting grandkids right now.
Oh god. Where, where do they live? What district?
In banks.
Why don't, where do your kids, no, but anyway, I'm not.
So I should move.
But what, like, so we talked like gamble cornerstone about this and they did not see as much of an increase as was predicted. I mean, what? Again, this is not like official, but this is some of the stuff that went into the um. Study, I guess, that Hope gave us is predicting how many of our current families when their kids leave, move out and are. Replaced by families with children is seemingly difficult and. Right now they are predicting that to happen less than happened in the past. So instead of the us like going to pay this money to Portland State, which. Seemingly people don't believe is going to be accurate and I, I, I don't, like, we hear that a lot. It's like almost not necessary. It's more necessary to know what is our total capacity and monitor when we. When it looks like we're going to start seeing these increases, knowing. That'll give us a better idea of when we'll be reaching that capacity. We actually start seeing the population increase. So. Right now we can tell the architect. Tell us what we can do with this property. And then if we think we're going to exceed that at some point, we'll have to buy more, that kind of thing.
Or, and maybe go to a different location for.
Yeah, buy more.
Yeah, yeah.
First started talking about this, Ron, didn't you make a? Comment about if we build like, it, it's, you could build like a sheltered area or like a covered area.
Yeah.
Build on top of that and you can fill that in if you needed to, like, is that something that we're?
So, so.
Where, where expansion?
Yeah.
Where I'm going with this is do we tell the architect that we want to try to maximize the occupant load of, of the campus? Based off the guidelines, the maximum guidelines that the city allows. So cities typically state height restrictions. And so. Do we say, okay, we're going to build a three story high school because we want to maximize our occupant load for the campus? Recognizing that with every classroom brings additional uh parking spaces required and different students. So. As we explain this to the architect. Do we want to tell them that we're trying to maximize the campus occupant load? And, and look at utilizing the maximum what the city allows for ordinances. For the height. And, and I think that's, that's something that they're going to under, try to understand, like, what is our target? We, we've talked about a two story classroom, right? Based off, first to your point, my experience in, in the field is that. Typically on new buildings, the mechanical equipment get put on roofs. So trying to go up on that. It's a huge impact because all of a sudden now you have to take mechanical units off, you're disrupting the school and so on, so forth. Secondly, when you add additional load higher up, it impacts all of your structure from a lateral standpoint. So. All of that, you know, with that mindset, then you start tall, you go down and you have open under stories. To do what, you know, because it's easier to infill, similar to what our middle school currently has with classrooms. I'm not saying to advocate any, you know, whatever the population, whatever the load is. There's just the strategies from a building side of how you want to handle that.
Well, there's a little bit more context that might be helpful. Uh, I, that's a good point. When we started this and still today. We explored what is the ideal configuration for buildings today? What serves high schools, middle schools, elementary schools best in terms of heights with direction, space, utilization? And of course, junior high is an example of those. Of those recommendations that happens to be two story that is generally. The, where districts land, uh Lincoln is four stories because they said, we're going to. Not going anywhere else. And that they made a choice. They sacrificed. Whatever they needed to because they wanted to keep the, the school there. We could, yes, we could certainly talk about that, but we were, we were kind of basing this on that premise that currently current. Building practice, education practices are the two stories is, is a good practical configuration for education.
So this all just goes to, do we give them a number? And if we're all comfortable giving them a number to hit. Then, you know, that's what we do. Um, or if we rephrase that to try and say we maximize with a two story structure, that might be a different number.
I, I think that maximized the two story structure hits that point of like. Not having to quibble over exactly what the right number is and also not going crazy and thinking we're going to have a ten thousand student district.
I think we could do both, maybe, maybe use the number as an inference, for example.
Right, totally.
Uh, you know, if they weren't thinking it of those numbers, the placement of this building may or may not allow for another building.
Yeah.
Or like you say, unbuilt out space, top or bottom may not be considered. If they know we're trying to go for, you know, uh, three thirty five hundred students. They may do something different, or if they think we don't care beyond where we are, they may do it differently. So yeah, I think maybe we do both. Maybe we. Give what we expect to see and, and some of what of our expectations that we're, we're going to need to see.
This is an approximation of what we're thinking and then you guys see what you can do.
So can you just remind me what the occupancy level for the elementary school and the middle school is? Like, what are the numbers? Is it?
I'd have to get it.
Five hundred or?
It's right now.
It's got to be more than that because.
I think the elementary is four fifty in the uh.
Max?
No, I didn't.
No, 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 like, what, what is the max?
Well, I'll have to get it because right now they're four hundred, but we know there's three full classrooms that are empty. But I'd give you a rough estimate of like five hundred, but I didn't even, I'd, I'd want to look it up to tell you.
Well, again, back to our peak uh occupancy, which was what? Two thousand and eight or something?
Yeah.
That, there was an assessment on these buildings by the last administration. Back and they, when they built the elementary school, they estimated it could handle five hundred and fifty students. And they said that junior high could handle um three hundred. That was the old junior high.
Right.
We learned in renewing that study, there is no way that the element, the middle school could handle three hundred students. And that the, the, at that point, the elementary school was packed and they were at five hundred. And so we, just based on that practical experience, we know that the elementary school can't go beyond. Uh, five hundred and the middle school uh that we had built was built to ha, to accommodate three hundred.
The elementary could do easily, we know mathematically right now it could do four seventy fives.
There you go.
Cause we have three classrooms that are empty and twenty five kids isn't too much. So that'd be seventy five more than they have now and they're right around four hundred.
We were really close to five hundred.
Went really close, yeah. So that seems to be the like practical.
They would take that back.
And, and the middle school is like four hundred?
Enrollment or capacity?
No capacity, no.
I don't know.
Middle school is built to capacity of three hundred.
Three hundred.
The, 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 the numeric calculations were based on working back from that high school. Was that that would require a. Three hundred student in two grades for the middle school. So in the short run, we moved the sixth grade out of the elementary school and put them in junior high to relieve that tension.
Right.
And going forward, we would build a lower or a, a lower elementary school. So we would split the elementary school and then move the sixth grade back to the current elementary, which would give the middle school the space.
It needed.
That it needed for that scale.
So this, the middle school is like a two fifty five.
Enrollment.
Yeah.
Not capacity.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm trying to think about maximum capacity.
Yeah, just, I think you mentioned, what is it?
With a, with that couple empty classroom.
Your high school can only feed in so much, right? We have one middle school, one elementary school. So we know like. These are the maximums we can actually get. So it looks like eight hundred kids up to eighth grade. No, eight hundred.
Well.
In the high school. In the middle school and elementary school, we can deal eight hundred kids up to. End of the third grade here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That one. And, and so then, you know, basically that's. What I, that's.
Well, that's all.
Hundred capacity high school then?
Using the numbers we're using right now, yeah. That gets you to about.
Actually gets you to seven fifty.
I don't know how that math works, but.
If the first eight would provide eight hundred students that needed to go to the high school, they'll provide more than that. Because if you look at the breakdown of the population in a twenty five student. Uh, I'd have to look at the, the, the chart and a twenty five hundred students, you had that, that breaks down percentage wise.
But the difference, I think, where you two are doing your math differently, I think Will is including the potential of that lower elementary.
Yes.
So that does it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Because there was, we felt there was room on the campus for that.
Okay, but so high school wise, you're telling me we should be shooting for seven fifty max? It's really like, yeah, that, that's all it went to. Okay. To me, that's kind of the more important number.
Yeah, I think.
Because we're building new classrooms here at the high school.
But I think part of the, just, and again, this is where it's going to be really important to keep remembering the whole time. So I, I know we've talked about this, but just. For the sake of clarity. We're also hoping to get a master plan that we can actually for the entire campus.
And.
That we can just keep it, not that it would ever change, right? But keep and live it. So like, while the high school is what we're working on right now with like the vast majority of this money. We're hoping that master plan might include, yeah, you're going to need a lower elementary at some point. That's why it's worth talking about during the master planning process.
They might also say you're going to need a lower load, but you haven't got space.
Yeah.
You know what you did, but we don't. Change this whole calculation.
Yeah.
Question about space that I brought to Brian before, and I think I brought it up to the board at some point. The field that's just right here across from, they're next to the. The baseball fields. Can we buy that?
Which, which?
You, right here.
Behind the houses? That's where there's going to be new houses, that's right.
That is already sold for new houses?
Yeah, it's only on the right side.
You mean the side? There's a side area too, though.
They had a sign up that still says.
There's an industrial porch segment, which is directly across the street.
Exactly.
Could be purchased, yes. It's nine acres.
Okay.
Um, it was, we looked at that at the time.
Okay.
So we, that could be at worth considering as an estate penalty.
Don't we have more property on the elementary school grounds though? Over by the post office?
Yeah, that's why we thought we'd have one for a little, for a little for uh elementary.
Can you bring up uh the campus and present that, Brian? That might be beneficial.
Yes. And though.
Just an arrow here.
Yeah, I just want to remember on, Will, you'd asked for the agenda item to start at least that discussion on our admin center. During this time and I'm just checking the clock. It's five thirty. So I'm happy to, let me pull up Google Earth real quick. I think it's. It's either my vacation homes I've been uh.
Well, let's see your vacation.
I've been trying to like hope for.
Right.
Or it's the high school. I can't remember what I looked at last.
I heard the lottery is getting big again, so.
Oh, no, we just got to, if someone is um. Expanding, I had to look it up. I didn't know what it was.
That's okay.
No, I can get it. It's easy. I just didn't know where we got it from there, maybe.
Social picture of that home.
I have a general question than if we're still not. Talking about the two elephants yet.
Yeah, totally.
So. On, on the one thing, on the high school, you have update, upgrade C T E, you know, classrooms and stuff, and then it shows up on the wish list, like.
Yeah.
Which is it? Is it one or the other? Because I, I wish it would come off the wish list.
Well, so that's a, let's talk about that interest. Since one thing I'm really asking, I'm going to ask you guys and you're going to get so sick of me saying it. Is I'm going to always try to loop you all back into some sort of procedure so that I don't pull my hair out, like not knowing how we move towards a decision.
Yeah.
So where we're at in the procedure for that, I'm going to be like super linear. Is. When we went out for this with everything we got from Soderstrom and the Scott Roses group, I can't, R and C was there too. They said we didn't have the money to upgrade our C T E wholesale, like take the Voe vocational building and gut it and start over. So their plan has like one more C T classroom or two more, some small addition, right? But like we shared last time, we authorized forty two million, forty nine million in bonds. We have sixty two million in total spending with the grants and everything. So that then creates a wish list. What we don't have yet, and it sounds like what you're, Dan's definitely asking for, what's our mechanism to determine scope? And I, I think that's something that's, that's why we hire cornerstone. That's why we hire brick architecture. They need to show us. What, when you were adding something, what the trade off is.
Yeah.
Okay.
And hopefully the master plan will flush that out if we give them. Reasonable guardrails, but not limiting.
Well, is anyone, would anyone on the board say that we would? Not put C T E as a significant priority for a wishlist item? It may not be top of your list yet. You're not deciding that now, but is anyone like, oh my gosh, that's not even something to talk about, which I want to think from knowing you all that that would be the case and the needs of our kids. And the needs of our kids to do hands-on learning that's gonna get them a high wage, high demand job, I mean, it's.
I, I think if, if we, if there is, we should go tour it. Because I think your opinions may change.
Well, I don't think there is.
No, I don't think that, I don't think it's the case. I think we just need to now get, we're just, and the other thing is y'all have been thinking about this for decades and everyone's so excited, and that's great, and I'm excited too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
But like, as soon as we get like some official master plans and some official scope.
Right.
It will, it'll be just a little bit less ambiguous, I guess.
Sounds like a sixty-year-old arc, well, there's a shot.
My goodness, I, I actually, they asked me to present to the uh, to the bank's. Economic Development Council on Highway Child Demand Education, so hopefully we'll be able to do that and get the city engaged as well.
Real quick point is that, that CMGC bringing them on, as the design's progressing, we're gonna get estimates along the way. Probably usually schematic design will get an estimate, design development, you know, thirty percent, sixty percent, but we'll probably get even an early one. In this master plan process, so that we can see where we have aligned with the budget and look at that, that's pretty.
Sorry, Ron, that, I uh thought.
No, no, you're, you're good. It's just to Leslie's point, Leslie's point, the field next to the elementary school, it's, it's easier to help visualize when you, right, there's a field there for. Ogo was referring to as possibly a, an area for a little bit lower, um, you know, K through second grade.
We always throw even, like we all, this, this road is ours. And then this, you know.
Right now, that field is empty.
Yeah.
For athletics.
I just like keeping everything kinda full, so if we went across the street, I don't know.
So yeah, what, um, I think what Chris is talking about is. Where, yeah, so it's right by the turn, so it must be like somewhere right in here. Actual parcel, the sign's right here, I don't know where it is.
Yeah, where the elements, where the lead is.
Yeah, I think that's right. Um, so I think, and Will, let me know when you just want me to turn this over to you, Will wants. Had asked, and I think it's something that we've all wanted to make some progress on, some discussion of this building and the process for getting to a decision and what that looks like, so. Well, I know you have a lot of ideas on it, can I just kick it over to you to kick it off?
Sure, well, I mean, yeah, I asked Brian if we could bring this up because it's, it's one of those things to me in the big picture that. Um, really foundationally sets the trajectory of where we're gonna go. Um, and you know, there's no one here that wouldn't like to, doesn't have a sentimental attachment to this building, you know, given, given for a report, we'd love to see some continuation of it. But the pros re- outweigh the cons, so the pros for removing it. Outweigh the cons so dramatically in my mind, I think it would be irresponsible to do that. And so I'm just making my case. My priority in setting the starting point for this campus is that it be based on maximum use of the footprint. And traffic flow. Which I believe to be one of the same. Uh, we all know there needs to be change to traffic flow, including other access points and et cetera. And we don't know what that's gonna look like, but. I believe that if we optimize the footprint, then that'll give us the most room to accommodate that. So, starting with this building, we did an evaluation a number of years ago. Can't perfectly evaluate a building like this, but basically it's unreinforced brick, which means it has no structural integrity to speak of. Any whisper of a shake will cause you fall down. And so what we know, we don't, we don't know what might be further bad in the building, but what we do know is that. To make it structurally sound, we more or less have to demo the inside. Because a perimeter wall has to be put in place, cement, steel, whatever, that the brick can be attached to. Uh, to make the, these walls earthquake safe. And so, again, that's an estimate of the cost, but the, the. The, my understanding of the assessment of that, it was when we did it. And I haven't seen anything to counteract that, that to. Retrofit this building and make it a quick save. Might cost a little less than replacing it, might cost a little more, might cost the same. But from my standpoint, even if it costs less, maybe say that we could, we could upgrade this building for three quarters of the cost, we could replace it. My big hangup is that it confounds the footprint of the campus. And so basically, if this building stays, it dictates the entire new building. Everything has to be built around this. And so, you know, some, some things that are examples, what we might run into is, we may be able to build closer to the road. And make use of that if this building's not here. We may wanna build further away from the road and put parking in there. We won't have that option if this building sits here. Um, we may want the, the, uh, the, the building, the wing that goes out this direction situated one place, if this building stays, it dictates where that wing goes. Whether or not that's ideal or not. So this building is gonna, so I believe that's gonna cause costs. And um, cause uh maneuvering that's gonna reduce the value, I think it's a sacrifice we would be making. For the best dollar spent for our campus and for our kids by keeping this building. This building has about eight classrooms today that are unusable, if we retrofit it, we'd probably have about eight in the future. There's a potential that a building, first day of building in places would have many more than eight. So, if we were to take this down and put another one similarly in its place. Um, it would have more capacity than this does. We looked at this building as a potential performing arts center and did a pretty thorough study on that. And again, it's a sacrifice, it would be kinda cool. But it would be very small relative to what we'd like to have, we would probably see about a hundred and fifty people. Um, whereas kind of the minimum if you were to build one would probably be three hundred. Sunset High School is five hundred. Um, so, again, it'd be cool to have that, but it creates a space that is really not long-term suited. For us, and it costs a lot of money, and it again dictates how the campus is gonna lay out. So, and the, and the other thing is, 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 is um. I guess my, my concern is, it's little things like this that can really, I think, impact the long-term. Progress we're gonna make. You might be, you might say that we could do, we could retrofit this quickly and put students in it. It's gonna take a lot of time to carefully deconstruct this and figure out what's wrong and what's right and decide what we can do and what we can't do, we're gonna have arguments back and forth, the community is gonna be involved. Uh, with who, they're not gonna know all the facts and figures, I think the exercise we'll have to go through to keep this, aside from confounding the footprint, will be, I think it will slow down progress. And so, I mean, my father went to school here, I went to school here, I have a sentimental attachment to this building. But, I mean, we're, to me, we're talking about a twenty, thirty, forty-year campus. That will be dictated by a building that we could replace for maybe a little bit more. And create a campus that has much more opportunity. So, uh, when we talked about this in the past and we did do some community meetings on it, and there was a lot of support for keeping it. And as we talked about it more and more, the more that support went away. And not, it's not gone, there's still be a little light to see it, but um. And so, I thought the decision had been made, that we didn't want this to confound the campus and, and have to be something we work with all the way through. And so I, but, but obviously it hasn't. And so what I asked Brian, is if some, some way we can come to a consensus on the board on this particular decision. Right now, and say, A, it's not gonna be considered to be kept, or B, we're gonna keep it on the list to, to, to appropriate. At least then, as a board and a, Will know, we're gonna put it in here, if there's some way you can factor this in here and do this, please do it. Um, to the master planners, and that's gonna be an illegal, illegal part of it if we decide to keep it on board, um, if we don't, we can say. You know, consider the, the entire space available to you, master planners. So I just thought that if we could come to a consensus or a vote or a, 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 the board, maybe we could get clarity, if we're gonna, gonna keep looking at it or for. Put it away. That was my hope.
I thought we kinda talked about that though, and what things we could take out of the building to, you know, put into our new building and. Yeah, I've had quite a few phone calls actually from our community members lately because of the Wolf House being taken down, and they said, are they gonna take everything historical down in our community? So, um. When I explained the earthquake thing is, is the biggest and what we would have to do. And taking things out of the school that we could put into our new school. That would be reminiscent of this building. Of course, I love old buildings, I'm on the historical society. I love our history.
So I think one of the things that we need to uh understand, because there was obviously this. Pressure point is that we're about ready to hire an architect. We need to do community outreach. Uh, really what we're trying to do is give direction to the architect on, on our master plan. And really, I think it comes down to, at Will's point, we can give them one direction. To say, hey, this building, the gymnasium's gone, you guys design whatever you need to. Or we can say, give us two master plans, one with this building in place. Um, and then what's your master plan look like? And then we can add community input on the direction, that we can then. Understand during that time when we have a, a CMGC contractor on board, or we can start doing selective demo of what's in, in the walls, what this building um. Is hiding from us that we don't know, we know that laterally, it, you know, it's an unreinforced masonry building. But structurally, it works from the gravity standpoint.
Until we get that first big boom.
Thank God, in other words, gravity will, will overcome.
Well, but, but also just recognize, we've, we've had earthquakes. And, and since the, since this building was built. So, what you guys, when we say unreinforced masonry building, what you guys need to understand is our building code has changed throughout the years. Being more and more conservative as we understand the coastline, the Cascadia Fall, to make the building safer and safer, right? So, what we're talking about at this point is, do we direct the architect to think of one option? And that is with this building and, and the, the barn demolished? Or do we ask the architect to consider two master plans, one of this building in place? Uh, whether the barn's in place, we're not in place, whatever that case is, we can have community input at that time, see where the community lo- lies. And then we can understand a, a possible direction. And, and during that four months that we talk about, we can start demolishing portions of the building uh that we need to, I. That classroom over there has water damage, right, we can all of a sudden start taking off the ceiling completely, take off the determiner finish of the walls and understand. Uh, what we're looking at. And, you know, maybe the structure itself, maybe there's dry rot through all the structure. Uh, maybe that becomes another factor where it's, it's not worth in the budget to replace this. But if we can replace it and it is cheaper by, you know, uh, you know, a million, two million dollars, does that buy us a vocational building? What's on our wish list? What, what is it?
Basically, we have to think of our students too. And we want the best education and the best place for that education that we can get. But we kinda have to.
Sorry, Leslie, I just wanna call out Chris a little bit, thank you, I meant to put that, no, in a good way, Chris.
Call me out, worry.
Uh, that's kind of a drive order. Elevate or, and I don't, not that you need me to um authenticate or elevate anything, but you say, just wanna highlight, I thought Chris said something really found in, I had come, come from me to you, greatness, she's like. Let's just make sure when we're making decisions, it's for the best interest of our current students, our future students and the experience that our kids have.
I agree.
And, and, and our, we, you, which means.
Absolutely.
Right, absolutely.
Absolutely, so, um.
Leslie, to your point, um, regarding the historical. You know, society and the demise in the Wolf House. When we're talking, in my view, uh, when we're talking about possibly doubling city limits and population. And we start demolishing every building in here that's old. Um, and in my view, this building is probably the oldest uh building that we have in town that serves a civic. Component. Um, and we need to be very clear to the community of why we're demolishing it. And I think once we have the, the general contractor on board, we can start uncovering all the walls behind the building. Um, and it then provides more feedback to our community that we can provide them with influence.
Well, I did tell them everything that I know from what we've talked about and what, but I did say. There's hope that we can take parts of this building and put it into other parts of the school so that we can have at it. If that's what it boils down to, once we look into it. We don't wanna put all the money in this, in, in this building and not have enough for what else we want and need.
But then, then it goes to, as, as Will pointed out, if it's actually cheaper. To renovate this building, then we're actually saving money.
Actually, that would be my hope.
Saving money for the overall project to whatever wish list is. So all of this goes to, um.
Hey, we might get more votes from the community.
Well, no, you, you guys. We're talking about major renovations and infrastructure, there is pros and cons to every choice and decision that we're making. And it, it's not, I mean, I don't take that lightly, uh, and so we just need to be educated as best we can on those choices.
And I, my position is that we are. We've been through the process, we, we understand the trade-offs, and if they were close, then I'd say. Yeah, let's see what we can do, but to me, they're, they're overwhelmed.
And from my perspective, after going through villagers' board, which was done in the fall or in the spring. Um, I think there is possibilities of saving the building.
Oh, I think you can save. I just think the sacrifices too high.
So what Will was asking for at the beginning, right, that I thought you did a really nice job articulating, is what direction are we gonna give the architect? Um, I think at this point, the wisest thing would be, you would be giving me a directive on how to communicate with them, rather than make like some sort of proclamation or anything like that. So I think, I mean. I need a little guidance from you all on how you'd like to proceed, like, right now tonight, you know, we can do a straw poll on if you would like. To direct me one direction or another, and it's telling the architect to consider this as an option and give you all the answer your questions. For keeping it and demolishing it, or do you want me to give direction to the architect to only consider master plans that were to demolish this building? That's what I feel I heard Will say.
Yeah, I mean, I get, I mean, I, I think it'd be good to say, you know, consider a blank slate unless there is value in keeping this building in optimal use of the campus.
So that sounds more like option two, right, which is like maybe like.
It's, but it's more, it's a little more specific.
Yeah, and I, I hear what you're saying about the law, like the lengthy process and the complicated and. Do we all remember the money pit in the eighties?
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm like, oh, I know it's a meatball.
Come on, come on, Dan, you've seen the movie.
Yeah, I already took.
I guess, I don't, I don't believe in categorically tying anybody's hands, I mean, you know, if, if we say, yeah, if you think it's best practice. Best utilization of the campus, best for the traffic flow to, to, to make use of this building, then do it. But I don't want them to attach a sentimental component to that, I wonder if we can learn them to look at it.
Right, yeah, right.
Right, so I think it's making sure we have the most optimal building, looking at budget, timeline, scope, program, operations, needs of students, needs of community, traffic flow, all that.
Yeah.
And be very clear with us on the data of why they're doing what they're doing, as far as why'd you make a master plan and demolished it? What was your calculus for doing so versus why'd you make a master plan and included it? What was your actual calculus for doing so? Not just, it's cool building, or not just, it's an old building, so we got rid of it, or it's a cool building, so we kept it. Sounds like you wanna very much know the facts of, and then I give a calculus. Okay, I think I understand.
Yeah, similarly in the gym, you know, we can say, the high school uses it a lot more, we can say all the things that we want. The end result will be, because they may say, oh, we, actually, we could put it out in the field and over there and create a helicopter transit for it, this is a problem.
Perfect. All right, I think I understand direction on this building, and I think also as we, I think this is helpful in two reasons, one, it's helpful to talk about this building, give the architect direction. I also think this will help us as we process future decisions, because there's probably gonna be a hundred more of these things that are similar to this, so. Um, Ron, I think we probably better call the work session and head downstairs, you have six minutes.
Uh, yes, um, work session is adjourned, and everyone reports down in six five.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, great, great, great seeing you all again.
Yeah, it seems like a center forever.
I know, we, oh, we have an August meeting.
There is, there is food, by the way.
Where is that?
I was gonna say. Could've been having it in the fridge.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got ten minutes.
Um, yes, of course.
Are we eating?
Yes, of course, I can, I can work the crowd. Let me stop recording.